Twenty twenty-two. This meeting of the planning board is being held in person and may be available as a live broadcast on channel eighteen. Members of the public with an interest in any portion of a specific item on the agenda should plan for in-person attendance. According to Mass General Law, anyone who intends to record the meeting must first notify the chair, who will then inform the other attendees at the start of the meeting. Is anybody tending to record this? Okay. The meeting is called to order. I would ask you to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we have a public hearing for PBE twenty twenty-two dash fifteen. Main Street HP LLC owner applicant Greg Searunian, representative, seeks approval of a site plan review special permit and use special permits with waivers. The proposal is to construct a misuse mixed-use structure for retail and restaurant use with an outdoor patio area containing five residential units, gross floor area greater than seventy-five-hundred square feet, twenty or more new parking spaces in the commercial village overlay district. The request is pursuant to the code of the town of Harwich, section three twenty-five fifty-five oh-nine fifty-one dot L and fifty-one dot M. The subject property is five seventy-five Route twenty-eight, assessors ID fourteen dash V fifteen, located in the C-v zoning district. Mr. Searunian.
Again, I'm Greg Searunian, the architect, members of Com Architectural. I'll be doing the presentation along with Dennis Miller. He's the property owner. Dennis would like to speak a little bit before we get into the project.
Would it be okay if I just introduce myself?
Please.
And just give a quick overview of
That'd be great.
Of myself, Harwich Port, and why we're here, basically. So my name's Dennis Miller. Good evening. Thank you for all of the
You don't look like the Dennis Miller I'm used to seeing.
I'm a little, little less funny.
Yeah, that's for sure.
Yeah. I moved, I bought a home in Harwich Port a little over fifteen years ago. We immediately fell in love with the town, with the village, and with the community. I always felt like I wanted to do something to contribute to it. I thought it was a great opportunity to build on what was already, I thought, a wonderful, wonderful community. So a few years later, I bought my first commercial building in Harwich Port. It was actually my first commercial building ever, the old House of Morgan at five forty-six Route twenty-eight. I got quite a lesson because it was, it was an empty building with a failed septic system and a decaying foundation. And I've, after I signed the PNS, found out the bank wouldn't give me a line, wouldn't loan money against a building like that, so. But anyway, so I got an education. I went through with the purchase, scraped and scrapped and got the money put together. Over the following decade, I was fortunate enough to build relationships with a lot of property owners and business owners and was including people like Dr. Fennel and Mike Monahan and Carl Johnson Cranberry Jewelers and Peter Hurst and Dr. Gravity and a number of others. And then I ended up cobbling together eleven buildings and two lots, two empty lots that we're here to talk about tonight, all directly on Route twenty-eight and all concentrated between C Street and Bank Street, so in the heart of the village. So a pretty good feel for the village. Today, those properties house twenty-one tenants, four year-round, long-term residential tenants who love living in the village, and I love them as tenants and great, and then seventeen small businesses, fourteen of which never existed in Harwich before. So we, we brought fourteen new businesses within that, that small area. And interestingly enough, twelve of the seventeen businesses, so it's at seventy percent, woman-owned and operated, for, you know, for what that's worth. I'm, I don't know why, I'm proud of that, but it's really, really been something and it's, there's a lot to be said for that, and I think there's things that Harwich could do to encourage more of that, quite frankly. They're all successful. So we've, you know, replaced seven roofs, installed six septic systems within those properties. We have seventy-six parking spots. We're, you know, there's just a, a lot to it, but that's a quick summary of, of my history with Harwich Port, if you will. About three years ago, we started to work on a plan to develop the five seventy-five lot. I had an anchor tenant set up. This was in two thousand nineteen, the second half of two thousand nineteen. Actually, at the time, had Greg build a sign that still is there today, you know, if future of Harwich Port, you know, call this number. And, and we got a lot of calls, a lot of interest in it. Well, COVID hit. I lost the anchor tenant, therefore I lost the ability to finance and, quite honestly, the, the willingness to go and take that risk at that point. So here we are again today, a couple of years later, back on our, kind of back in the groove with it. The town is vibrant. The market is strong. I think it's the right time. I think this development will help take some of the concentration out of the center of town and spread it out. Will also benefit the businesses around it down that end of the area. I think it just creates a, an expanded, yet appropriate town center. So that's enough of my history and why we're here. I just want to briefly, before Greg gets into the details and, and you guys engage him, talk about the use, what the strategy is for the building. I think it's very important that people understand, as it relates to some of the concerns that you would naturally have, having a building like that in that area. First of all, on the second floor, there's, we're planning five one-bedroom residential units, pretty cut and dry there. First floor is four commercial units, will consist two retail operate, two retail units, one of which I have a, I have a clothing store, I'll tell you, full-line clothing store, committed, good quality, a name you'd likely know. Think of the Puritan. It's not Puritan, but think of a store like Puritan, which I think is something that Harwich Port can certainly use. Second retail, I've known committed lots of people interested and aren't ready to make that decision yet. We have a coffee shop, an experienced and quality operator who will serve the town well. And I think, again, something, we've lost Dino's, we've lost Buc-E's, we've lost, you know, there's a lot, lot of reasons why versus going to a gas station for a cup of coffee. I think having a traditional kind of local coffee shop is, it would be a great feature for the town. And finally, and probably most importantly, we have a restaurant. The restaurants, over the last couple of weeks, a lot of feedback, a lot of talk, since it's been publicized about the meeting and the review, and, and then talking to a lot of people. I, I thought it was important that I disclose who the restaurant is planned to be. I think it's important that we know, because I think the character and the credibility of the restaurant has a lot to do to maybe potentially allay some of the fears that people would have and justifiably so have, given, you know, the nightlife and the noise and all the other concerns that come with having restaurants. The plan is for the Mad Minnow to relocate from the rear of five fifty-four Route twenty-eight and relocate to this location. It's a, the Mad Minnow, for those of you who don't know it, it's a family-oriented restaurant. It's quality, it's well-run, and I, and I believe well-respected, non-controversial in many ways, which is a good thing. And I think it's the perfect fit for that, for that location. And that, and the owners, you may or may not know them, Mike and Tony, but I would use the same adjectives to describe them. There's, that's kind of operators they are, it's the kind of people they are. They'll be responsive, they'll hear any issues, they'll deal with it. They, you know, we, we don't have noise issues, we don't have anything. I own the building that they're in presently as well. And so that's the plan. That's, that's the restaurant that would go in there, so that's what you can expect. The, the same, you know, style restaurant. They close typically by eleven. They typically open late afternoon into the night. The coffee shop will be opening at, the plan right now is six AM until either two or three PM. Nice synergy there. The retail will be open, I'm sure traditional retail hours may open Wednesday nights during the music and the courts. I would expect that they would, and that'll be more of a walking anyway. So I just wanted to give that quick overview, so you'd have more context, which, when, when we talk about a restaurant, you know, you think of what's, you know, there's been a lot been going on with restaurants in the last few years in our town. And so that, that, that would be the plan for the building, and I just want to introduce myself, give you a little more color, and let the professionals take it from here.
Thank you very much.
So maybe a little bit of procedural upfront. You know, normally I'd do a full presentation and go through this. We do have the comments from David Spitz, which, you know, we've been engaged with him to sort of go through this. We ultimately realized that, given the direction this has taken in the last two weeks, that what we're here for tonight is, you know, probably not a vote, but more of a input and that we're gonna have to come back. But, you know, in order for us to move forward with what we're currently proposing for additional parking, that means more work. The site engineer, he doesn't even have a survey of that property, so before Dennis goes and makes the investment into this and we start working through these issues, we're looking for tonight from the board, you know, their feedback on the project, the direction that we're trying to take it in, and, you know, any other input that you guys would have in addition to what David has presented to us. Because I think David's report is probably the crux of the issues at hand, probably from the board's standpoint and, you know, the public. So I'll highlight a few things. Dennis just sort of did a good job telling you what the building is in the building. It was, you know, it's a good-sized building, but we think we appropriately sized it for the site. We think it's a safe design. You know, we did have a traffic study done, although we realized, you know, that probably would've been required and it wasn't required initially, so we can talk through that a little bit. Our traffic engineer couldn't be with us tonight, so I think as, as we get into those details, you know, we can have some feedback on that. I know there was, you know, the building, the site plan is up, and I presume everybody has had a chance to see it, but we originally had come in for a parking waiver that David didn't think, you know, he could support. So we looked at options, which was to use, as Dennis said, he owns all the, you know, the two adjacent properties. So if you look at the site plan, it was up, you can see the building. What we're proposing on is parking on Lot five seven-one, which is far left, which gives us an additional sixteen spaces. That, in conjunction with off-hour shared parking, you know, we're, we're here tonight for our parking waiver, looking for, you know, we need seventy-four parking spaces. What we're proposing is fifty-three, with offsetting hours between the coffee shop, which is six AM to two PM, the restaurant four to eleven. The offsetting hours results in, we believe, thirteen space, spaces. We, as part of this redesign, which we didn't include, is we're showing two handicap parking spaces. If we do the total parking that we've provided, just by state law, and which mirrors, I think, your bylaw, we need one more handicap space, so that would be revised. The exterior of the building, you know, again, there were no exterior guidelines, so, you know, we looked at what was done for the town for east part of the East Harwich Village Center handbook, which I believe was done with, through the Cape Cod Commission. So we drew a lot from that. You know, what they talk in that is having the building set back, having variation in the roof lines, variation in the lengths, you know, not having big expanses, trying to create different materials. So we believe, you know, we have followed that guideline. You know, we tried to make it look like individual buildings, not just one big building. The, as part of David's comments, I guess I'll just sort of go through those and address those.
Well, perhaps we ought to listen to more to your intentions and
Okay.
A little more descriptive, because I think what we're gonna do is have David
Speak.
Speak to
Okay.
The plan as submitted, because this is all we have to work with, is what's,
Right.
What the documentation is here. And then we'll probably have some questions from the board
Okay.
And then open up to the public. So I think the more that you can make the case for what it is that you have and where you're, you know, tending toward, we will definitely be hearing from Mr. Spitz, so.
Okay. So I'm gonna sort of focus a little bit on the site plan, then we'll look at the architectural plans. So we're using the existing curb cut. Again, this is a state highway, so any curb cut where we're gonna have to go before DOT. It's one of the reasons we kept it where it was. We kept the, we provided the required width. That is part of the bylaw. We put the parking in the rear. There is some residential development behind, which they just recently put up the fence. So one of our waivers is for, instead of doing the hedge, was to put some trees in the landscaping area. It also has to do with some of the septic components, because we can manipulate those a little bit better. We are showing parking on the adjacent property of five seventy-one. Again, Dennis owns those. That currently has a barber, one residential unit, an interior designer, and an architect/real estate office. We're providing eight spaces for that, which we believe is adequate for the use that he has there. The plan for the additional parking on Lot five sixty-nine is, you know, we've created some walkways to bring you over to the building. The restaurant is going to be on the far-right side of the building, if you're far-left from the street approach, so that the outdoor patio seating, you know, is not on a driveway. It will be on Route twenty-eight. We do realize we have to provide some type of barrier for that, which we will supplement in the design. The parking in the back, we've got the landscaped islands that are required. We've got the enclosed dumpster. There are, in the front of the building, we have landscaped islands to sort of break up the front, not just a seat of sidewalk. The state sidewalk will remain, we're not touching that at all. Can we flip to the building plans? The first sheet here that you see is the landscaping. Shows a better detail of sort of the proposed patio area. It's also showing some bike racks that we're proposing, as well as, you know, the landscapes. Dennis did want a clock sort of sign, sort of have some, this building have a signature piece, and there are details for that. This plan shows sort of the locations of the two retail locations, the coffee shop and the restaurant. The first floor retail and restaurant has basement storage for utilities, but it's no habitable space. It's not gonna be used for any displays or anything. Can we flip to the next page? Lighting, we did pay attention and followed the bylaw in terms of the foot candles, cutoffs for the lighting, as well as, you know, tried to come up with, you know, simple light fixtures that are ornamental, but also a little more modern in today's world. Can we flip to, you can skip the A-one, go to A-one point one, please? The second floor, again, has the five apartments, three are at a thousand and two are at eight hundred. When we went before the Board of Health, you know, we did have a study there. Their requirement for that not to count as a bedroom is we needed it to have at least a five-foot opening, which we showed them. They accepted that. It wasn't, it's not the intent to have two bedrooms, to have one bedrooms with an office study. So that's been opened up. I know there was a comment on that as well. So again, this is where you can see some of the items that we took from the guidelines. We have different materials, clapboard, shingle, some stone, windows with some muttons in them. We also tried to pay attention to where the signs are. The building height is thirty feet from the average grade, which meets the bylaw. We don't have to ask for a waiver on that. Does have a couple of balconies that overlook the street, and we also have some dormers that sort of start to break up the roof lines. Materials we're proposing are gonna all be maintenance-free, you know, traditional-looking Go to A-one point four, you can see the proposed sort of sign that's got a clock on it, and they'll have all the business names to try to keep this simple and not a lot of clutter in the building.
And it doesn't have to be a clock, it was just my, my thing.
I'd say that's it for the presentation. I think, you know, we can sort of get into more of the details of re-review, David.
Okay, great. So thank you very much. Appreciate the background and the look. Now, David, would you care to take us through your prodigious effort here? That'd be great.
I'm gonna start by following Dennis's lead and tell you very briefly who I am.
Great.
I was staff planner here from two thousand and nine to two thousand and sixteen, at which point I got smart and left. The three planners since then, in the six years after I left, figured that out more quickly. The, the one correction I'll make to the applicant's presentation was, my comments will reflect a lot of town planning issues and my perspective on that. I am very much of a growth center planner. I support this concept. As far as the details, I will give my thoughts to the planning board and then step back and whatever you say is, is what goes. The correction is that I in no way intend to have my comments reflect those of the public. I am used to years of experience in which people who live in the neighborhood often have concerns. And, you know, I see several of, I live in that neighborhood, I see several of my neighbors, and they can speak for themselves at the appropriate time. I don't like to read through a report, it's four long pages, but at Duncan's request, I am going to pretty much go through what's in here. This is online, I know at least some of you have seen it. And I will start by saying that this is exactly the sort of use combination that should be here. This is a vacant field at the edge of the, of the village and a proposed mix of restaurant, retail, and residential uses, as well as the building orientation to Route twenty-eight. Those strongly support a village concept. It will complement existing uses in Harwich Port and provide a pedestrian-friendly extension immediately to the east. The one letter of support from Heather's Airport indicates exactly that. They welcome the additional foot traffic that they will head in their direction. Even though I think this is exactly the right type of project that should be in that vacant field, the planning board must be diligent in reviewing the scope of the project and details such as parking adequacy and safety of access and circulation. When I first met with Dennis and his team, I said, okay, in real estate language, the issues are parking, parking, parking. There is a real parking shortage in Harwich Port. I live on Cross Street, as does at least one other person in the audience. Well, works there. And there are, there was a real parking shortage at certain times and certain seasons, not too bad in January. The, so when, when they showed me an application for thirty-eight parking spaces required and thirty-seven provided, I said, don't even bother. And we talked about various options, leases and other property. I think the, one of the letters that came in suggested an additional arrangement with Heather's Airport for evening parking. I think that's a wonderful idea. It's not something we discussed, but that's something that might help a little further, that sort of thing. One of the main things put on the table, which the applicant has since responded to, is the extra parking on that lot, five sixty-nine, whichever the number is.
Five-six-nine.
Five-six-nine, okay. And the attorney who's hiding back there assures that the applicant's access to that will allow him to do what he wants. So one of the objections that came into that, so I'm departing from my script a little bit, is that you don't want parking in front. Well, you gotta balance in a village situation between, you want the buildings up in the front. If you go up and down Route twenty-eight, it's building, 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 and the parking's in back. Sometimes it comes up to the street. At Mad Minnow, it comes up to the street. Next to the Chamber of Commerce, it comes up to the street. You wanna cut down on how much parking you have up by the street, but at the same time, this site needs parking. This end of the village is worse than most of the village in terms of close parking. I think their proposal to put the extra parking spaces right there is a very strong one. I support that. I think I did not look in my review comments at what landscaping exists and/or should be added between that parking lot and the street, but there's enough room there that something good can be done there, if anything more is needed. So that leaves with seventy-four spaces required. The slight addition to the additional original application is that the original application did not treat it as a fast-food coffee shop type of restaurant. And that requires six additional parking spaces. So that's why you'll see the revised application showing six more by zoning than the original application. So I think that's an important addition. I think if they are gonna do the coffee shop, it should be reflected by zoning, that it's, you know, I, I think the neighbor never quite did that in their application in the existing Roots Building. But I think that it's important to properly designate it as a fast-food restaurant. That requires the six extra spaces. That brings it up to seventy-four. Fifty-three is still a shortfall of twenty-one. So the first thing is to look at the two restaurant spaces, thirty-five in the evening, thirteen in the daytime. Planning literature has concepts called shared parking. They're pretty much common sense, but if you have uses that use parking different times of the day, then credit should be granted. So what would be required here would be a statement by the applicant, a condition by the planning board, that as they've said, the coffee shop will not be open at the same time as the evening restaurant. Now, you get into enforcement, that can be not so easy if the applicant doesn't do that ten years, five years from now, ten years from now. But if it's on record, then the town has the ability to enforce that. I mean, I think you gotta rely a little bit in these situations on what makes sense. It makes sense to have this combination of these two type of restaurants. Dennis and I also discussed having the retail shops closed in time for the evening hours. I don't think that's quite as an easy fit, so even though I think it's likely that the retail parking need will be light when the evening restaurant is open, I wouldn't recommend any formal condition on that. any formal condition on that. To me, it's reasonable to assume that the retail spaces will be lightly used. That would cover the remaining gap between fifty-three and sixty-one spaces. The planning board must determine if that level of waiver is reasonable as part of a shared parking concept, or if further arrangements, such as working something out with Heather's Airport, are necessary to meet that gap. In my recollection of Harwich Port history, which is not as long as some people's, I believe the planning board was fairly lenient when the property that Mad Minnow occupies now, when that came in for a site plan revision, I believe a fairly good waiver was granted. I didn't do the research, because the town parking lot is right next door. When the Roots Building came in, it was a very small waiver that was granted, I think four spaces, but I'm not, I didn't do my work carefully enough. So, again, is this waiver, I think it's in the ballpark, has it gone far enough? You guys decide. I do think the applicant, it sounds like they've taken care of the one-bedroom versus two-bedroom, so there's no additional requirement there. Planning staff told me, and I followed up, saying that the existing development at 571, they said there's eight existing spaces, and that's what they represented as the need. I don't know if the actual uses that are there come to more than eight spaces. They should provide that information. And then I believe the rest is pretty technical, they gotta provide all of the shared parking legal documents, submit a legal opinion verifying the right to use, their easement to get to use 569. They've already said that the handicap spaces should be three rather than two. I think they could do better about the actual location of the handicap spaces. I know that was also in one of the neighbor's comments. So I'll stop on parking, I buttoned through one page. Okay, parking, 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 but also traffic. You can really get into the weeds on this traffic stuff. I'm gonna try not to get too far, too confusing. The crashes, no problem to date. All right, trip generation rates, traffic consultants and counter consultants can spend hours and days on what should be the proper trip generation numbers. It's a very strange science. I happen to have done a lot of these studies in my earlier life, so I'm familiar with some of the games that can be played. Their traffic consultant, who is not here to defend himself, used average industry rates. Anybody in Harwich Port in the summer could call that into question. It certainly could be higher than average. On the other hand, they also didn't look at the fact that this particular site would have evening-only restaurant, daytime-only coffee house, so the numbers might be a little bit lower on that. There's two other terms called internal capture trips, that means how many of the trips are actually coming from the residents and so forth, and pass-by trips, trips that are already on the road. Again, I'm not gonna try to give all the description of that, but I think their assumptions of that are reasonable. So the result is, a hundred and five net new vehicle trips on a weekday morning peak hour, that means fifty-two going in, fifty-three coming out, fifty new vehicle trips weekday evening, and sixty-one new trips Saturday midday. Does that really fit Harwich Port? Maybe not. But it gives you the general scope of what their project will be. All right, now this next point is probably important. Most commonly, these numbers are used as part of a level of service analysis. What that does is that tells you, are you Level A, which is great, are you Level F, which is terrible, or something in between? And in the suburban location, they're gonna tell you that you should be Level C, or maybe Level A Service D. That sort of requirement doesn't make sense in a village. In the summertime, it's gonna be awfully hard to turn left out of here at certain times, and a little less hard, but still hard, turning left going in. Of course, the more the traffic backs up, the more some polite drivers are gonna let you through. Overall, it's gonna be a congested, but still fairly safe situation. It's what happens in a village, folks. The more relevant analysis, and this was suggested to me by another planner, who shall go nameless, is that, well, is it gonna back up as far as the Bank Street intersection? So what they could, their traffic consultant could do, would be to show how far traffic would likely back up, would it impact the existing problems at the Bank Street intersection? Intersection, site distance are fine. Okay, here's the other big point. An abutting property owner, one who has very strong credentials, has suggested replacement of the proposed single driveway with one-way-in and one-way-out drives, such as those at Roots Market. This person was saying that if you have the Cumberland Farms in and out, the new development in and out, right across from each other, with the other gas station right next door, that's an awful lot going on at one place. The applicant simply has to show whether that is safe or not, to meet the requirements of special permit and site plan review. I'm gonna not say anything more about the applicant's burden of proof there. This other commentator said, do a one-way-in, one-way-out? I think that would be ideal. I think that would work better. Is it mandatory? No. But there's a back and forth between what the applicant and his traffic engineer says and what this planning board accepts that should take place. He has the right to propose the entrance where he wants, and they can also tell you why they designed it that way. I won't attempt to do that. I think that's one of the important points that this planning board should address. Twenty-five-foot turning radius, you wanna make sure your trucks don't drive up over your curb, but you also, in a village, would do much better to cut that down to fifteen feet if possible, between your engineer and your traffic engineer. I mean, what they've done at Cumberland Farms and at the Roots Market Building, some of the turning radius have been cut down to ten or fifteen feet, some of them have been kept at twenty-five feet. I'm not sure the planning board needs to dictate on that, I just think they should look at it more carefully and suggest whether they can cut it down some. It's better at the village, it's better for pedestrians going across, if you can cut down that radius as much as possible. Right now, the twenty-foot rough five radius cuts the corner of 571, so they need an easement. It's just a picky point. Page three. No, still on traffic, but on page three. Nope, sorry. Page two, street orientation. Very pleased for my time here as planner to see the East Harwich Village Center Handbook being used for something. And I do think the guidelines in that book are very good to be used here. I do note, and I don't know if the persons in the audience, because I don't know them, that one letter said that this building ought to be in Worcester rather than Harwich Port. I don't really understand that. I think they've done a fairly good job of breaking up the facade of the building, using different materials and so forth. I'm not a building expert, so maybe there is a way to do it better, but I thought they did pretty well. Set, building setback, this is one of my big points, or just my big focuses in general. It is so important about how the building relates to the street, to make a good, strong village. Actually, the property that does it best, in my opinion, and some people who don't like bars and restaurants won't agree, but in my opinion, the one that does it the best is the front of the Mad Minnow Building, what's the name of the restaurant?
Three Monkeys.
Three Monkeys. They've got a site that really separates from the street, but draws you in, and it feels like a pretty strong village. Again, it's a pretty active site, and I might say too much from some people's point of view. Other ones are the Roots Market, which is not nearly as strong, the building's a little closer to the street, there's just a few tables stuck out on the sidewalk. So I think Dennis has the background or experience, whether I give credit to him or his tenants, I don't know, but I think they've started a very good arrangement here. There was a neighboring comment that there is no delineation shown between the restaurant patio area and the public sidewalk. It wouldn't be very hard to show something there, and I think they should do that. Landscaping, lighting, and, okay, I've already hit my main points, but let me just see what else there is in the last two pages. I don't know if the EC is the October glorious swamp maple, or the AR is, I suspect they both aren't, so you got, I just put that comment in just to show that I'm actually reviewing your application. The use of native species, that'll make my wife happy, that comment. But they're real, seriously, there are some good species, use of native species helps out in a lot of ways, and I strongly encourage the applicant to check with the conservation agent to see if any substitution should be made. They can defend their landscaping waivers within the parking area, I have no problem with it, I think the landscaping in front and in back is more important. They've already explained they're relying on the neighbor's fence, so that they're doing trees instead of a shrub, but it does require a waiver. The lighting plan they've already stated does comply, it looks to me like it does the street sign, they'll provide, that's all the detail they need to provide at this time on the street sign. Departmental comments, the most relevant is the Board of Health concerning the study areas. The applicant simply needs to show whatever the Board of Health required and how it fits onto these plans. That's just a technical thing that can be done easily. The police department noted that the traffic counts are old, there has been some growth on traffic in the area, but surprisingly, not that much. They submitted speed data, and so I don't think there's anything too significant there. Other details, all three parcels should be part of this application, so the applicant needs to add deed and references, et cetera. There's a point of information on the zoning data table that should be made clear, there's an additional waiver request that has to be clarified, and there has to be an additional special permit request for the fast-food restaurant. Okay, that wasn't too bad. In sum, I, the applicant said at the beginning, they're not seeking a final approval tonight, either staff nor the consultant wrote one up for you, but I think you should express your opinions on the major issues to give them an idea where they stand.
Very good, David, thank you so much, we appreciate your work on this, coming back into the frying pan, as it were.
Sure.
So, I'd like to hear from the board at this point, we've all had a bit of homework.
Could I just sort of?
Okay.
Give a little bit of input?
Sure.
Because there are a few things, just I think that you should hear from us. So one of the things that he just mentioned was the driveway, you know, having one in and one out, you know, we did, we did look at that. We had discussed this and explored it as an early option. Because we have the ability to widen the existing curb cut, which allows for the two-way traffic, and again, we feel that going to the state, trying to get a second curb cut is gonna be difficult, as well as, you know, we need to make sure we maintain the fire truck radius, that, you know, to keep the building safe, we felt that keeping the single curb cut, widening it, and having in and out was the necessary way to move forward. Again, if we do another curb cut, the building's gonna get smaller, it's also gonna result in, you know, more parking. Even though the building gets smaller, the parking gets smaller as well. Again, I think the parking, everybody always looks at the parking as sort of the worst-case scenario, there's, you know, having parking for that building doesn't necessarily mean when the restaurant's not busy that the retail, and I'm sure other people will be parking and using, you know, parking the space, hit a retail store and then go across the street or down the street. We know that will happen, so keeping as many parking spaces makes sense.
If I could just add one thing to that only because I was personally involved with it, and I've been talking to the town for at least two years about this project. One of the comments that came out of with the former planning, Jonathan Ideman, was when we talked about the concept a year or so ago, his strong suggestion was to not have the, originally the restaurant, these guys, and my instinct was to have the restaurant closest to the town center, more visibility, more, you know, and that's where they wanted to be, and that's where I thought it should be. He strongly suggested not to have the restaurant with an outdoor patio next to the driveway. Families, especially a restaurant, I had told him what I thought might be going there, so, said, well, the families, it's not, we'd prefer not to have it next to the driveway, so we moved it down the other end of the building, and that was part of the logic in that, too. That's just a little more insight, and I was personally involved with it, that was before Greg got engaged with it.
Right, so that addresses that one. Same thing about the turning radius, you know, we did, we did not review that with the traffic engineer, just because he wasn't available to go through this with us. And we did talk to the site engineer, and again, he was more concerned about fire truck, making sure that he maintains that, so we can discuss that in more detail, you know, what we make. The setback for the patio and having a barrier, we will look at that, you know, ideas we had, is right now that site's got a nice split rail fence that's, you know, really, you know, fits the neighborhood character. We may look at that with some planter, so we'll come back with something.
And right now, the Mad Minnow uses planters to separate, and we would, I'm sure that's along the lines of what we do, or there would be something.
Yeah.
We would definitely separate it.
I think having, having a little bit of rail and planters makes it, you know, more attractive.
I guarantee you that would happen.
The landscaping, you know, we actually do a lot in the Cape Cod, and we always follow, the Cape Cod Commission has a native plant list that we use, be happy to review that with the conservation agent. I'm not sure, I have to check the, show that's just a typo on the plant.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to open up to the board for questions. Anybody wanna start off? Thanks, Bill.
Okay, so I have questions on the parking. I did my own additions on parking. You show not, no parking for the existing building, which is 571. You showed that you moved it, but nothing's gonna take its place. And, so I've added everything up, and the other one was, you did not put parking spaces in for your outside patio tables.
The, first of all, in 571, 571 does not have parking.
Right.
It's a lot that with no, no parking, I'll, you know, just because I, because Dr. Fennell sold me the lot, I was able to then allow them the use of that parking.
So we counted, again, you know, David said we should do the analysis through the zoning, you know, we didn't think that was fair, because they don't have parking now.
So where, where will they park?
So we, no, again, our parking calculations, we've included eight spaces for them.
If you add it up, and I added it up, it comes up to, you have five apartments, I thought three of them were two-bedroom apartments until you just said that you went to the Board of Health, and they told you, it's supposed to be five-foot opening, not a three- or four-foot opening. So, you have that.
To answer your question on that, the restaurant is by number of seats, so the seat count, whether it's outside patio or inside.
Yeah, I'm good with that. So, you had a hundred seats in a restaurant, you have to have ten parking spaces for the employees. You have twenty seats for the fast food, and two employees have to have parking, and then the two-thousand-foot retail spaces need fourteen total for what they are, but there's no mention of putting parking where the real estate offices, the barber shop, there's a gallery out back, there's a cottage out back, and there's probably an apartment upstairs, which I don't know for a fact.
We do, we counted for eight spaces in our calculations.
You used them twice.
If I may. The revised site plan, and there's only one sheet, sheet one of eight, the entire left set of notes are the parking calculations, and it says parking for number 571 currently on number 575, eight spaces provided, and that's added up to the total requirement of seventy-four spaces.
But it did not get added up into it.
I kinda know what he's saying. I kinda understand what he's saying, but I think, you know, we did that because we were asked to, again.
No, it adds up.
What was the total number you got?
I got ninety-four.
Ninety-four.
Yeah, what he's saying.
You can subtract a few spaces.
So, just, let me just say what I saw, and then I'll shut up. Retail, they've indicated ten. Residential, they've indicated eight, restaurant thirty-five, the other restaurant thirteen. If you add- If you add those four categories up, you're up to 66. Then they've put eight spaces provided currently for 71. They've added that up. So they've told you their calculations, and Billy, I haven't checked yours, but they've showed 74 spaces. To me, that includes the eight spaces to, for the existing. So I'm seeing that adding up to what they told in their presentation should be a zoning requirement of 74 spaces.
Okay, so my, mine came to five apartments, they need nine spaces. The outside seating, they're going to need 12 spaces. The 100 seats in the restaurant, they need, plus the employees, they need 35. The 20 seats for the fast food and one per employee plus six, they need eight. Two employ, two employees, they will need two, the two employees. And then the two 1,000-square-foot retail spaces, one per every 150 square feet, they would need 14. That total comes to 92.
You, you said for outsides?
Outside tables, yeah.
Well, the, but the table, I, maybe I don't understand the code, the zoning either, but the tables are included in the 100 seats.
You didn't state that. Okay.
Okay, that's, that's.
In other words, 100 seats include the outside tables.
That's what the septic system is designed, septic system is designed for 100.
Okay, I apologize, but that, yeah, there's 100 seats in.
Place I found the seats, the outside patio seats was on the landscape plan, not on the site plan.
Yeah. Right, point taken. Again.
Thank you.
The plan is 100 seats, whether they're inside or out.
Then the other suggestion I had was maybe you could get the, have this hair salon to maybe give you parking after 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock at night, and have, have some kind of a shared parking space.
Yeah, we haven't had that conversation, but that was mentioned early, yes. Yeah, I'll certainly contact Heather and, and, you know, have that conversation with her.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Craig?
Thank you. Was there any conver, you, you explained that you did, you looked at the suggestion of doing an in, separate in and out, similar to routes, but found that you were concerned about an additional curb cut and how the state would respond to that. Was there any other consideration given for a different, using the entrance as it's shown here, just make that the entrance, so it's a little narrower, and then having an exit and working with Heather's Hairport to have an exit onto Bank Street from the rear parking lot? It would cut across a little bit.
In other words, cut across Heather's parking lot.
Not across the middle of it, maybe across the back end of it, so.
Yeah, I had some conversation with Heather early on about that, because years and years ago, Dr. Fennel owned it all and had the right, and had the right to do that, and then he sold her those lots and separated, and, and he rights to do that were eliminated at that point, so she didn't have a lot of interest in that. I did, did speak to her that, not about this other idea, which, you know, maybe she will, because that's a revenue generator without infecting her business. She didn't have a lot of interest in doing that at the time. This was probably eight, nine months ago. I, I would certainly revisit it with her, but, you know, we, yeah, she didn't, she wasn't signing up for it at that, at that point. I didn't know if it was necessary then when we came up with all this, and, and then a week, 10 days ago, I agreed to basically take my buildable lot and turn it into a parking lot to support the, I, I was hoping that that would take care of it. I'm not sure she would agree to it anyway, quite frankly. If I were her, I'd be hesitant to, because it would have to be a long-term easement, you know, and probably irrevocable to some degree. I don't know how that works, but that would have an effect on the value and.
We, I just wondered if that was an alternative that had been explored, or if not, if it could be.
We did pay attention to the curbing there, thinking that in the event the fire department needed to have second way in, they weren't driving over curbing, so we did pay attention.
And we left that open specifically lined up with it after discussion. We talked, actually talked to the fire department, too, and, and an emergency situation, but not for us to, for our employees and customers to have the right, and residents have the right to go across her lot.
Was there, if I may?
Please.
Was there any consideration to potentially moving the entire structure 10 or some other number westward, so that you would then have the room, it would look like if you moved the parking spaces that are assigned to number 571, if those could go closer to that building, and I don't know if that's possible with setbacks, but that could move everything a little bit further west, allowing, again, just one entrance where, a little farther west than where you're showing it, and then free up room on the east side to have a potential exit out that way. So you accomplish the one entrance and one exit like Cape Roots.
The other thing with the Cape Roots is that they, I believe, instead of having the parking spots on the side perpendicular to the entrance, they're parallel on both sides.
Right.
So you have parallel parking, so you cut down, basically cut the slots in half so you don't lose the space. But, David?
Yeah, the point you raised during your presentation about not having traffic, vehicular traffic go right by the outdoor dining spaces, that makes a lot of sense, and I support that, and I recognize that it's wonderful to have an in-out, but you have to make compromises, and I think that's too strong a compromise to, to live with for the life of the building. I do have a comment with respect to the accessible spaces. Where they're located, you have to cross the parking lot to get to the building.
So the.
And I would suggest that a better place might be on the first row of parking spaces on the east end of the building, but south of the building.
Yeah. I, I did talk to the site engineer about that. We are going to make that change. He, he thought it was closer, and the code says they have to be as close as possible, and that's why he did that, but I mapped that out. I think it's the same distance.
It's pretty close.
So we're going to, we're going to change that.
And to keep, eliminating the safety hazard of people crossing a busy.
Yeah, no, I'm in agreement with you, and I already talked to him, and we will be changing that.
So what I mean.
We're going to just put it here.
Craig, you have another?
Right.
Yes. The traffic, the traffic study that was done, you know what period of time of the year that was done? Was it June, July, August, or was it February?
It was probably the May, June.
I'm sorry?
May, June.
Yeah, just done two months ago.
But he used, he used data presently existing.
Except this is from 2013, but.
No, I mean, the VHB is a very well-known traffic Cape Cod.
Okay, so you're not referring to the one the police referred to.
I also have a question just on the layout, and this is probably more detail we'll get into in the future, but the location of the dumpster, and it appears that the, the doors to the stockade fence or the stockade enclosure open to the north, and I'm just wondering about a front-loading, I don't know what you have with trash truck that would be in there to get that dumpster, but it looks like a real tight.
Or they roll the container out. They'll roll them out.
Roll the container out?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the only way.
Thanks.
Oh, yeah, right there, yeah.
Yeah.
Anne, do you have a question?
Just on, so on the traffic study, I can't say that I'm an expert on the traffic study except driving through Harwich Port. We're all experts on traffic during the course of the year. So the only, the traffic count that the police had, or that was included in the packet was from 2020, and that just kind of flagged for me, because that was three months after the pandemic, so we may not be at the levels that we are now. So it's like, what are the numbers underneath these traffic studies? And is another one needed or appropriate, or?
Well, again, he relies on the data that's available.
Right.
So he, it's not like he, he didn't say, oh, I'm not going to use that one, I'll use this one. He used the most available. You know, it gets very expensive to go out and do your own traffic counts, and again, Dennis already spent money ahead of time knowing the traffic was an issue. Tried to be proactive with it. I think, you know, if you're asking us to go out and do a full traffic study, you know, that's very costly.
True, and it sounds like they're very technical. The other question, this is years ago, there used to be a, a temporary cop that was at that Bank Street intersection for, every summer for, I don't know, 15, 20 years, and then that went away, but that's one of the intersections you're going to impact. Is that something to be considered? I mean, it's always the, you rely on the goodness of others to turn left, but, you know, is there some thought to revisit that older practice?
To, for us to place a police officer at the intersection?
As part of just managing the, this development. I mean, that police officer was paid somehow for many years to manage Bank Street beach traffic.
Yeah, I, I mean, I strongly suspect that Ember will have more of an impact than, because they're literally on the corner, but where, our driveway is quite a distance from Bank Street, but I, I mean, I'm willing to, I have things happening everywhere in the town that impact that intersection as well as others, as well as, so I, I get it.
It is a town impact, too. I mean, bringing a business into town.
We used to have three offices on Main Street, Howardport, for the traffic.
The last one probably remained as Bank Street.
Bank, C Street, and in-between.
Right.
But, I don't know.
Yeah.
How good that would do today.
I've, I've been doing this for 30 years. I've never seen anything like that put on as a condition.
Right.
I think it's a great idea, but, you know, again, I think it's more of a, to me, that's more of a town thing. I mean, why, I mean, there's a lot of people on that street would benefit, whether, whether this building gets built or not, so.
Emily, did you, oh, I'm sorry.
There's lots of ways to handle these things, and creativity probably is going to be one of the things that's going to be needed, because it's, as David said, parking, parking, parking. So I just threw that out into the sauce.
I think, I think it's a very, you know, characteristic, too, of old downtown having a.
Well, it's certainly something that maybe collectively, as a community, we should bring it up with the town.
That's sort of what I'm saying. I think it's a bigger issue than just Dennis's.
Certainly will be generating a lot more tax dollars. They'll pay for, for these things, that's for sure. And then, you know, when I look at this plan as it stands, and the, and the parking that is already provided in my other properties, we, I think it totals 129 spots. The entire municipal lot, including the 30 employee parking spaces, is 130, so we will equal the entire municipal lot parking. So we're expanding parking. I know we're expanding uses. I totally get that, certainly for the July and August months. The rest of the year, we'll have overcapacity likely, but, and, you know, this parking lot at 569 is likely to be George's Pizza's parking lot for a good portion of the night, and I let it happen, just like I let those restaurants across the street from me use the 554 parking lot that have no parking spaces, and their, their people, their deliveries all come there. So it's, you know, it's, I'm happy, and I don't complain about it, I don't do anything about it. I don't allow my tenants to call tow trucks. I don't allow, you know, we, we, that's not what the environment we're trying to create, so I think, given that, that's not a bad idea. That's a good concept, because it ties in, I mean, I have my own thoughts about a Howardport initiative that deals with crosswalks, sidewalks, and sidewalk lighting for safety, security, and aesthetics. I think we should do something for the entire section, and, you know, and it could be a public-private. Everyone I know is willing to contribute to it and, and come up with a plan, and I would love to be part of a committee that does it and takes the initiative, and over the three or four-year period, do a major renovation. And certainly, crosswalks are a major issue in Howardport Center for anyone. I'm sure everyone knows that, and there's some pretty simple, low-cost solutions that we're willing to do, except we were told we're not allowed to do anything in the street. We were going to even, we were just going to get those orange cones on Friday through Sunday nights to stick in the middle of the crosswalks, and we're told we can't do it. So, I don't know, I'm maybe going on a little bit here, but I have a lot of passion and a lot of focus on those particular issues, so I think it's a bigger discussion, and I think it'd be one I'd be more than happy to participate in and contribute to. That's my answer.
Thank you. Emily, did you have any questions?
I have a quick question. So certainly, if the Mad Minnow moves in here, into a potential building at this location, we'd hope that they'd be there forever, but was just curious, is there any concern around putting restrictions on timeframe for that restaurant to be open if there are?
Yes.
You know, there is turnover, and, you know, what, I certainly don't want, you know, a beautiful new building not to be open.
That's, my answer to that is yes. So that would be something. I heard it, and I understand it, and I'm telling you that that's the intention, that's how it's going to work, but if the coffee shop wants to be open on Wednesday night during Music in the Port, you know, are we going to tell them they can't, they're going against? So those are some of the things we just need to be reasonable about and need to have some kind of an open communication about it. Or if the Mad Minnow wants to open for lunch on Saturdays for the, for a month, and the coffee shop happens to be open till 2:00, and they, they open at 12:00, you know, so I guess we just need to work through, I'm not a guy who works around the edges, and I don't try and, you know, skirt the, the rules. And so, yes, that is a concern, and we would just need to make sure, whatever we agree to collectively, that, you know, there's some consideration or a process in order to approve some flexibility where it's applicable and appropriate and agreed upon, but with the town.
Very good. Craig, you had another question?
Thank you. The, I'm looking at A 1.3.
Elevation.
Elevation, and I echo what Mr. Spitz said about the, the design and the use of the various building materials. I think it really follows the village concept. I think it, I think that's great. I'm a little hesitant. I don't share the same feeling about the rear of the, the building, and especially where that's all the parking is, so that's where all the, the people that are going to use the structure, the restaurants and so on and so forth, come in, and that's what they look at.
Yeah.
Are there entrances in the rear parking into the retail shops and the restaurant, or are those just entrances to the second-floor residences?
No, those are entrances into the retail. There's really only two entrances, one on the side for the second floor, and one over to the far right.
Okay.
We actually had talked to Dennis about this, that, you know, we set it up for your normal retail business, that we had had maybe your retail in the front and maybe some storage in the back, but we told him that, you know, if he doesn't have people secured, we would probably frame those back walls so you could put windows in if you want, you know, big window, if you did have somebody just, I just need retail space front to back. So we have thought about that. We weren't showing it because we wanted to show the worst case, which is this, but, you know, we are thinking those are either going to be staff, or, you know, possibly we've seen them before where it is an entrance, and it's, there's a corridor, and then, you know, the storage is on the left. So again, because we haven't laid out the tenant spaces, but, you know, we have thought about that.
And, and part of what will happen, particularly on the retails we're talking about, the clothing store, I'm talking to two clothing stores. One is more likely than the other, but both good-quality clothing stores. The plan would be to get them on board now, and then basically do a build-to-suit. So they would, if they sign up now, they have the advantage of being able to affect those changes and say, hey, listen, I want.
And it'll only get better. Like, yeah, we showed worst case.
So I'm going to pick up on the word that you used, that this drawing is the worst-case scenario?
Right.
Aesthetically, yeah.
Well, again, if somebody comes back and says, you know, I don't want to have, you know, retail all the way to the back, I need some area.
So you need to.
But, you know, if we were to do windows, we'd be doing them somewhat to what's on the front, so you could almost see through.
So I'm going to ask the same question or suggest the same type of, various types of building materials on the back that might look as nice as it does from the front as the back? If this is your worst-case scenario, and this is just a starting place, that'd be something that I prefer to see.
Yeah, we could, we could look at that.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the board? I'd like to, hearing nobody stand up for it, I'd like to now open this up in the public for comment. I request that you, if you're going to address the board, please go to the podium, sign in, tell us your name and your address.
Do we stay here?
Shall we stay here?
Stay here if you want.
Oh, fine.
In the, in the event that you would want to respond. In the, in the event that you would want to respond.
Yep, great.
Step right up, as they say.
I guess I'll be the guinea pig. My name is Carol Costello, and I'm one of the owners of the five cottages right behind your property, right behind the far, I guess you're calling it the furthest west that you're gonna put parking, so, I go way back, too, I kind of resonate with what you said, Dennis, I started coming when I was nine years old, and had a dream to finally someday buy here, and that dream came through four years ago, and it's because some of my friends were already in that complex, and they've been here, one was twenty-five, thirty years, the other one eighteen years, and another one fifteen years, and one sold just recently, so we don't know that new owner yet, but, so we have some deep roots here, we've been, you know, coming in, and some of those, I haven't rented as much as they have, I'm ready to retire soon, so I wanna live here, and that's gonna be a residence for me, so, that parking on the back, I have concern, because literally my bedroom window is about ten feet from that parking lot, and the people that do rent, I'm here representing all of us from that condo, that complex, we constantly have people from Georgia's parking in our stone parking lot, even though we have signs up, although we're not hardcore like you, Dennis, we don't wanna put like, you know, we're gonna prosecute or tow or whatever, but people are already using our parking lot, thinking it's a public parking lot, so we're very concerned about an easement of coming into our parking lot to access the new parking lot that you're gonna build, and our concerns are, you know, for lots of reasons, I think one of them is give an inch, and people, you know, naturally sometimes take a yard, and it would be like opening the floodgate to say, oh, people can come into this parking that's public, but going through this one, oh, well, this one must be public, too, and we have, you know, a decent-sized parking lot, but we have a lot of people coming and going, because they're rental properties, and because they're small, they tend to attract small families, they're affordable, they're great walking distance to town, walking distance to the beach, but they're tiny, so it's usually a young couple with one or two kids, and I've come down, I'm here now, I've been coming down when I can, and I see the families, and I love it, I love seeing the young families coming, but I've seen them with bicycles, you know, little kids with bicycles, and parents unloading cars, and I just think, you know, there could be a tragedy if that becomes an easement into the other parking lot, where people will be coming and going, and like I said, I'm speaking for all of us, not just me, my, my cottage tends to, is right up against where the parking's gonna be, so my concern is, what would you have as a barrier, would it be a, there's only, I think, a four-foot stockade fence now between us, and a lot of brush, which is wonderful, 'cause it's, you can't see to the street, and, you know, are there gonna be trees that'll be tall enough and all that, so, I think I'm, I'm concerned for me as an individual, but more for the cottages.
And our engineer, when we walked out there, with Dave, we talked about creating a natural barrier to the, we're sensitive to that, and I own the cottage that's next to you.
Yes.
Right behind you.
And it just hasn't been designed yet, because we wanted to make sure the concept of having parking there is, is something the board wants to entertain, and then we're gonna design-
We're gonna create a site plan for that parking lot, it just hasn't been created, but it will include a natural barrier against that four-foot stockade fence that you're describing.
Okay, so, I have one question, then, just, I came into this kind of late in the game, 'cause I'm a recent owner, and I'm representing someone that was gonna be here, so I had to kind of get up to speed very quickly, how would that easement work to that parking lot, can you show me on the plan that was up?
What if this is the overall news item?
When you put that plan where, and how that would work?
For the sake of the board, because, you know, you wouldn't necessarily know this, five sixty-nine, the lot where we're, we're contributing the additional parking, has a parking easement over the dirt lot that's next to it, which is five sixty-seven, over eighty percent of it, so if I built a building on five sixty-nine, I could put parking on the five sixty-seven, we're not doing that, you know, we're turning into a parking lot, so in fact, I'm not exercising the easement, the only is gonna be the curb cut, I just need to use the curb cut to get into the five sixty-nine lot, is my saying that?
Yeah, so, I'd just like to see what the difference is, 'cause, I mean, there's a big, beautiful tree there now, and it demarcates, you know, our, our properties.
So, where am I?
Right there, yep.
So, this is the five sixty-nine lot, this is the five sixty-seven lot.
So, okay.
This lot, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
This lot has an easement from fifty years ago, probably, or a parking easement over the slot, so if you build a building here, you can use this lot for parking only, you can't build on it, you can't do anything else, what we're saying here is, we are not going to exercise that easement for parking, we're just simply gonna take this curb, and then take a lot to go in there, the plan is this barrier right here, the plan is to put up some type, there's a stockade fence right here, I believe you would be, you live right here, probably?
Yeah.
Okay, it's right here, I'm sorry, I had the wrong line, yep, right here, and there's already brush and a lot of thick-
Yeah, yeah.
Our plan is either to enhance that or replace it with some kind of natural barrier, I don't know what-
Yeah, we, what, you know, the provisions in the bylaw that we have to maintain.
Yeah, we talked about it on the site when we first, but we just have not developed a full site plan for this, because it's literally a week ago, and we just wanted to get feedback from the board, whether that was even, you know, wanna make sure this is going forward to some degree, or at least it's acceptable, and then we'll, we'll take the time and get that developed, so I'm not sure if I'm answering your question, but we, we are absolutely gonna do that, and this is, this is sixteen spots, I believe?
Yeah, yes.
And it, and this, this is not gonna be a raceway, I mean, you're gonna pull in, you're gonna have to go slowly, 'cause you're gonna have to, no, nowhere to go.
Right.
You know, so we're-
Most likely, it's gonna be where they direct employees to park.
So, would we, so I guess, being a little bit naive to this whole situation, yes, there is an easement, we looked over our condo documents, we did see that, and that was something in the seventies, I believe, and certainly, traffic in the whole town looked very different, we're just wondering, once that easement is used for access, and should you need additional parking, is the next step gonna be that you're gonna take parking in our parking lot, and that's a concern of ours?
Absolutely not my intention.
Yeah, okay.
No, I am, I'm telling you that we're using this-
That's what you said.
All I'm using is easement, I'm not even, I never even, I'm not even sure that, I mentioned to David that we had easement over that, I actually knew it, because he, you know, I had to confirm that we could access the parking lot, but, but we didn't even talk, that's not the intention, no.
Okay, so I'm, and my, my thing is, what can we do to protect the intention going forward, that, that, because we, when all five cottages are rented, and each sometimes have two cars, I mean, it fills up ours, our parking lot, and we have a dumpster as well that needs access to be dumped regularly, so-
So, what we, I mean, I do see, you know, you, you, you have the Georgia's Pizza thing going on there, too.
Yes, we do, we do.
I see that all day.
Yes, we do.
We don't, because it's the grass, and it's not accessible, but I'm sure we will. What I'll commit to you completely, is that we will tell the participants here, including the customer, that we can't lease it and stop someone from parking there, but that this is parking only for that, and not this lot, I mean, and, you know, this is a dirt lot, it's-
It's a stone lot, dirt, yes.
Less likely to, you know, park over here, thinking you're going, but, you know, people park everywhere, I mean, I own the building across the street at five sixty-six, right across from Georgia's.
Yep.
And Dune Jewelry and Haberdash, and there are days when they can't get in or out of their parking lot, 'cause people, they're sideways, running into Georgia's and get in, Georgia's Pizza's, you know, creates a lot of drama, more than people realize, I think, much as I like their food, so, I don't know what I can say to assure you, more than that is not the plan, the plan that this is parking, I never even wrote the subject of including this parking at all, because I respect that, if it's not necessary, I don't wanna do it, I want, you know, you guys to get the quiet enjoyment of that lot, as we currently have, and like that, and I, I know some of the people in your place, and I'm happy to sit down and have a conversation with anybody.
Yeah, we love to have a conversation with you.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Anybody else from the public, please, step right up?
This is perfect timing. I'm Becca Aronsfeld, and I have, I have two, four, and six Cross Street, so, I'm the neighbor that David spoke of, while we're on the subject of Georgia's, this is perfect timing, I've got lots of concerns about not filling the parking quota that this building needs, Cross Street has become a total shitshow this summer, it's been building up all along, ever since I bought the building, my daughter lives next door to my shop, I have a tenant, on a daily basis, I am having knock-down, drag-outs of people parking in my driveway, blocking my driveway, parking behind my car, pulling in, saying, no, I'm just picking up pizza, apparently that's not parking, when you have to pick up a pizza, it's not parking, but they think nothing of blocking it, so ironically, last week, I reached out to Kevin Concinde, our deputy chief, and he says he's gotten a lot of feedback from people on Cross Street with the same concern, and he said, at the very least, at this point, it's been turned over to a public safety committee, the east side of Cross Street, he believes, is going to be no parking, very shortly, which is taking out twenty spaces, basically, which are people that are scooting there, 'cause they think they can go to the beach from there, people that are parking to pick up their pizzas, employees, et cetera, if we have another building that is not meeting its quota of parking, guess where they're going, they're coming over here, I can't run a business and be running out and yelling at people all day long, which I'm doing, besides the fact that it's my business, my daughter lives there, she has special needs, she walks her dog every day, David can tell you, it's lunacy on that road, because everybody else has had a big voice and gotten no parking on their side streets, Cross Street is the last hurrah, and it's a half a block from this new building, and I've got huge concerns about it, you know, I appreciate, and on the other hand, I'd be stupid to say I don't want another retail space further down on Main Street, having Dune and Haberdash there has been incredible asset to the town, people can see my store now, because we're off of Main Street, and it's great, but we've gotta have the parking, this is bad, I mean, I don't even know where the parking committee has gone, it was like, we have a parking committee, nothing was resolved, we don't have a parking committee anymore, so now, we're adding another building without enough parking spaces, and it's really terrifying to me, when, another aspect of this all, the fire department came to me at the beginning of the season, and said, oh, I don't want you to think I'm stocking here, I'm checking out your driveway, because if the co-op has a problem, we have to use your driveway to access there, because there is no other access to that co-op, is that what it's called, the timeshare, the timeshare behind us, we'll be using your driveway, I said, that's great, it's a fire lane, they can't get to my driveway on most nights on Cross Street, because there's so much traffic either way, so that's gotta be resolved, first and foremost, and the safety on Cross Street is terrifying, too, we've had road rage, we've had people zipping in to turn around and get the pizza, and I understand, Georgia's is a mainstay, but he never had to have parking, 'cause he's, he was part of the sleepy little town, and this is the thing that's scaring me, we're not a sleepy little town anymore, we've gotta really put up protection on keeping it from becoming worse than it is now, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Evening, Mr. Chair and Board members, I'm Bob Cohn from Pleasant Street, and along with two dozen neighbors in the north of Route twenty-eight neighborhood, I sent you a letter with concerns about parking for this project, the new proposal looks like it mostly addresses our concerns, bringing the parking space shortfall down from thirty-one spaces to eight, there was, we just heard on Cross Street, that's still a sizable number of, of a shortfall, but thank you all to, for having made that happen, and bringing the number of spaces down, the shortfall down, that being said, our neighborhood is vulnerable to increased parking demand, in part because there's no parking on the streets south of twenty-eight, so while we're mostly in the residential zone, our streets serve as a sort of pressure release valve for overflow parking and traffic in the commercial zone, and it's an ongoing concern for us, which is what prompted our letter, I have two additional issues about the plans I wanna bring up, and they've been touched on already a bit, first, a question about morphing of businesses, and how that might impact parking a few years out, as an example, Perk started out as a coffee shop, and then got a liquor license, and became a popular restaurant and night spot, I don't believe any parking spaces were added, similarly, similarly, the Port added an outdoor bar, and Three Monkeys put in sidewalk seating, but again, I don't recall hearing about any new parking spaces, in general, restaurants, and this has been touched on already tonight, but in general, restaurants tend to change fairly often, evolving year to year, so the question is, how can this be projected and managed long-term, how can we know that the coffee shop at five seventy-five will still be a coffee shop which closes promptly at two P M. five or ten years from now, so that the shared parking calculations will still work, how can we rely on the restaurant continuing to operate only during dinner hours for the same reason, how can we be sure that it will seat no more than a hundred people next year, or five or ten years out, I simply don't know how it's supposed to work, or if it works at all, but based on what I've seen, it looks like there's plenty of loopholes and wiggle room, so it makes me question all the parking projections, I don't know if this is a, a topic for the planning board alone, but it, it's a potential problem down the road, second, the plan for the additional lot at five sixty-nine Route twenty-eight looks good, or at least good enough, and it's absolutely necessary to add the additional parking spaces somehow, so I don't wanna shoot it down, however, I noticed that, and this has been touched on already tonight, also, I noticed that Heather Nickerson from Heather's Hairport wrote a letter in favor of the project, and as I believe Heather's has closed after six, and that she also has a sizable parking lot, I wonder if she's been approached for use of that shared parking, that lot for shared parking, shared parking there looks like it would have several advantages over the lot at five sixty-nine, A, it has twenty-two spaces, so that, that's six more than the proposal for five sixty-nine, it would bring the parking space shortfall down to only two, B, the lot already exists and stands mostly empty every evening, so it would seem to be a better use of precious space in the village than building a new parking lot directly on Main Street, together with the existing lot at five sixty-seven, the proposed lot at five sixty-nine would create a hundred fifty feet of parking lot frontage directly on Main Street, creating a mini wasteland right in the center of the village, which might be there for quite a long while, C, unlike five sixty-nine, Heather's abuts five seventy-five directly, which would make the lot more accessible and usable for patrons, the two lots could potentially be connected using a gate or traffic cones to block access, so to reserve it for Heather's customers during the day, further, as Heather's lot exits onto Bank Street, there might be some improvement in traffic flow, I think Mr. Miller might gain by reserving his buildable lot, and that whatever gains you had might be transferred in part to Heather, and maybe something could be worked out, I don't mean to create difficulties for either you or Heather, or anyone here, but I realize that there are business pros and cons, but I think that if it could be pulled off, the town and village might benefit significantly, and that's all I have for tonight, thanks much.
Thank you, Mr. Cohn.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Anybody else wish to address the-
Could I just comment, just for a second?
Yeah, sure.
On that, the, so the idea of talking to Heather, the difference is, I guess, to respond specifically to, between five sixty-nine and using Heather's parking, is I own five sixty-nine, so I have control of it, and I can do a permanent easement, or, you know, where she's not, I don't know how to believe that Heather would be willing to lease it, I'm sure, I would assume, but probably no kind of permanent easement, and I'm not sure that the planning board would accept a lease agreement versus an easement on parking, but that's the second time, third time we've talked about that, I give you my word, in the next twenty-four hours, I will contact Heather and see what, if anything, can be worked out, and I'd be happy to do that, I just don't think she's gonna allow us to have an easement for parking over a parking lot, because then she goes to sell her building somewhere, you know, whatever, for all the obvious reasons, I guess, but, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wish to address this evening?
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, under the public comments, just wanted to inform the public and the board, I received a voicemail from an abutter tonight, who was planning to attend the previous meeting that was scheduled that had to be continued, and he couldn't make it tonight, but he expressed severe concerns about traffic management and the parking issues, and I said that I would bring it up-
Thank you.
-as part of public comment.
Very good.
Do you have one other question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
And I'm not sure if this is Mr. Spitz, or who, but has there been any consideration, or is it feasible to have a, let's see- or is it feasible to have a, let's see, a right turn only sign as an entrance into the structure where the, the existing driveway in and out is shown, coming from the west, so that you are preventing traffic coming from the Bank Street area trying to take a left across the street from Cumberland and the, the gas station?
It could be considered. My initial reaction is, I think it would cause more problems than it would help.
In terms of, what kind of problems?
Anybody coming from that direction that wouldn't be allowed to turn left into the restaurant has to find another way to do it. And I think it's going to be easier to make that left turn than to keep going, either park somewhere else or turn around and come back. I don't think it gives enough benefit to do.
To do.
But you would need a traffic analyst to, to comment more carefully.
I, I think one of the things that we are missing, and I don't know if traffic analysis can do something like this, but everything that we're looking at now is based on current configuration. Cumberland Farms in and out, and the gas station next to it, in and out. I don't even know if they're marked. I don't think they are marked. So it's kind of a free-for-all, and now we're adding another entrance and exit across the street from that. And we don't have any way of measuring the impact of that on, not, not parking, but, or traffic flow on the street, but, I don't know what to call it, confusion from anyone trying to make any kind of turns from Bank Street to Cross Street, essentially. And wondering if there's something we can do in terms of sign management and that type of thing to help ease that problem.
David?
Given where I live and who I visit, I am down twenty-eight two or three times a day. And I've found that, especially in July and August, with the number of pedestrian crossings there are, that the traffic is slower, people are much more courteous, they will allow a left turn, and they'll say, "Go ahead," you know. So I don't think that's a problem. If it were a high-speed road, it may, with heavy traffic, it might make a difference, but for the most part, in the evenings, throughout July and August, seven days a week, traffic is crawling on 28. And, and nobody's going to go any further unless they let you in, so it's, I don't see that as a problem.
I hope you're right.
If, if I may, this is not an easy one. There is a lot going on between the Cumberland Farms and this new entrance right across from each other. I agree with Dave that things are usually slow enough in the summer that it will be able to proceed. I don't think you'll see a lot of crashes. I think, in many ways, my gut is that the separate in and out is somewhat better, but is this one safe enough? I think the burden of proof is on the applicant and their traffic analyst. I think they might have to look at that a little more carefully to present a little more subjective comment, if nothing else. So even though I think they probably can make this one work, I don't think signage is going to give you much. I don't think your left turn restriction is going to give you much. I think their traffic analyst can at least give a better explanation as to whether this will work, and I think you should ask for that.
In, whether this will work in conjunction with what we're already existing in there as part of an additional traffic study or further. Okay, thank you.
Did we have any further questions from the board? Okay. You know, paradoxically, a lot of the recent literature that I've read about walkability and, and traffic analytics suggests that as it slows down, safety goes up. As you tighten the lanes, awareness is also heightened. You know, it's one of these kind of counterintuitive things, but I, I think you're on to something with that, David.
But to follow up on that, that's why I said at one point, no extra turning lanes, et cetera. But both the lane as they propose and the one-way in, one-way out, both comply with what you just said.
Right. It's a peculiarity, and it's one of these things, living as I do on the west end of town.
You don't get that.
At a choke point, where I'm looking at, on a rainy day, a mile of traffic.
Right.
You know, two-tenths of a mile to my left and eight-tenths of a mile to my right. I don't take a left for about sixty days. So, I know what you're talking about. But that all being said, I think what we need to do is, I'd like to entertain a motion to continue this, and I think what we need to do is, David, are you available to continue with this particular project?
Reluctantly, yes.
Yes, okay, because I want to know if you're contracted, because I think the trick is going to be for us to engage more closely, to stitch up, because it looks like we've got a bit of a smear of proposal and, and, you know, town feedback. We need to kind of bring, merge this together. And our next meeting, I believe, is the twenty-third. I think we could probably have a lot of this resolved. I think we don't have, it seems to me that the board does not have any serious issues with the concept. I think there are details in the execution about neighborliness and parking we're going to have to, you know, come together on. And I think that we can make that happen, but I think it's going to have to be till the twenty-third.
You mean the thirteenth?
No, the twenty-third. Because, the twenty-third of August.
Okay.
Because Elaine is out of the office to the eleventh. And so that's our next scheduled meeting. So I would like to know if we could entertain that motion and, yeah, okay.
So that's August twenty, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt your motion.
One thing I'd like to see next time you come back is that the seating arrangements on the site plan be explained more.
Yeah, we'll document that.
Clarify that the outdoor seating is incorporated into the hundred seats, yes.
And maybe, in the parking, maybe put up small signs like they did at Roots, saying this parking spot is for the apartments, this one is for the restaurant, these are for the fast food or whatever.
Right, we hadn't drilled down that deeply, but that's logical, yeah, yeah.
Which is also possibly a solution to your butter with the parking lot and the stone lot, is to simply say, "Reserve parking," you know, you know, "Park at your own risk," kind of a thing, which is not, you know, it's not Horwich that I knew, but, you know, we, like you're saying, this is a little different now, so.
And, and part of it may be, and, you know, I have to talk to the operators and the, and the tenants, but, you know, part of it may be that we use that parking lot, and their employees all park there.
Right, right.
And they just, and then it's done. And that minimizes the ins and outs, it minimizes, and, you know, I, I don't, I don't know, I'm thinking out loud, I don't, I don't put anything in the record.
Maybe we can talk to Town Five, is into doing a trolley system from some of the parking up in Howard Center.
It's been, it's been talked about many, many times.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
As part of the continuance, I think, Mr. Spitz, you said in your narrative, correct me if I'm wrong, that we need to see, for lack of a better word, an entire site plan that would encompass on one page what we have now, but also five.
Oh.
Seventy-one and five sixty-nine altogether.
So, not exactly.
Okay.
The, their revised site plan does show all three together. However, the applicant, application currently is for 575 only.
Right.
And this is actually from Elaine, and I, I back it up, which is that all three lots have to be part of the official application. It's not what shows on the plan, it's, it's what they submit as part of the application, just the technical support stuff.
We understand what they need. Again, that happened, this is like a preliminary plan. We do need, you know, obviously, we want to talk to our traffic engineer, seeing that it looks like this is a viable solution, our, our, you know, site engineer actually has to do survey work. We'll shoot for the twenty-third because, you know, Dennis is anxious to keep this going.
Right.
If we're not ready, do we just simply ask for a continuance from that?
Yeah, you can communicate with the planning office, and she will schedule accordingly and make the notice.
I think that'll give us enough time, but again, they're not here.
Right, and, and let's see what, because I definitely want to make the twenty-third.
Yeah.
I've got a foundation guy who's, if I lose him, he's gone till March, and then everything gets blown up on me. I mean, the construct, not, nothing to do with, but it's awful what I'm going through.
Believe me, I know.
Never mind the cost, just even getting people.
Tell me about it, don't even get me started.
Yeah.
So can we get that motion for continuance with a date certain, no earlier than 6:30 on the twenty-third of August, please?
I'll make that.
So move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you on the twenty-third, I certainly hope.
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen, for taking your time, and I'd also like to thank the public for the input this evening. Always appreciate it and for your participation. We're really great, this is how it's supposed to work, so thank you.
Please need to be collected.
Yes, I'll take those.
And thank you, David, that was outstanding. Much obliged.
Glad to help.
I'll take care of it.
I received an email from Ellen today saying that we were all renominated. So aren't we all lucky? But it says here, we need to have board elections for chair and vice chair. So I think what that means is somebody has to nominate. I think we can do it as a slate, and since we don't have an attorney present, let's just do that by default, and let's see what the records or the minutes say. But I would entertain a motion to reappoint Vice Chairman Chadwick and myself as chairman, if that's suitable.
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that one carries.
I thought you might oppose it.
Who seconded that one? Who seconded? Did you make the second?
Bill?
I think it was Bill.
Okay, thank you.
Now, it says we have a vote to reappoint our committee preservation committee. So are we preserving committees? Or is this a preservation committee vote? So I have some, actually is, do we have, I don't recall seeing a preservation committee liaison from this board in the past.
The community preservation committee does require.
Oh, CPC, okay, all right. Community preservation.
Yes, that's an error.
Ah, ba, 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 okay.
That's an error.
And that's Mary.
Mary.
In her absence. Can we vote, please? I'll make a motion to renominate or reappoint Mary Maslowsky for our CPC.
Second.
We got a, any, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's good. We have some signatures that are required for the Bonneville County Register's deeds, so let's make sure we get those on the way out. And I don't have any briefings or correspondence on record here other than the ZBA material that was included. I don't know if that requires any commentary, self-evident.
No comments unless someone needs to make a comment.
No comments, and I think we have, we don't have minutes this, this session, so those will probably be in the next packet. But let's try and remember to make sure that if we did that reappointment vote for Craig and May, that we did it the proper way, as a slate, if we have to go back and vote independently each one, we can do that, too. And it's a technicality, but after having spent ninety minutes in open meeting law today, I don't want us to get snared up with any kind of technicalities, so. Is there any other further business for the board? Yes?
Thank you. You moved so quickly on 4B, the committee.
CPC, yeah.
CPC. Do we also, Megan, do you know, or, I don't know if it's a requirement or if we just did it, but I remember when I first got on the board, Joe was a liaison to the Capitol Outlay Committee. And I don't know if that's.
That was a separate appointment.
Pardon me?
I think that was a separate appointment.
Could you guys?
That.
Unrelated to.
Unrelated to the planning board?
That's my, my recollection, yes, but.
Oh, I thought he was at the AS.
I don't think so.
No, I don't think so either.
Oh, I apologize.
But I'm not positive that, I'm pretty sure.
The only thing that's missing here is the Historical Commission, HDHC, which is also Mary, but it's not listed here, so I'm not going to do anything if it's not, you know, in the, in the pipeline, okay?
I'll find out about that and see if you need to vote on it next time.
I mean, that's not a serious thing because she's a member of the committee anyways, so.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, any further business? This was a lot lower temperature than I was expecting. Because I haven't, I, my wife is like, "Are you seeing what they're writing up there?" It's like, don't pay attention to it.
Technical question. Because the plan's changing, do they have to re-notify it?
I think they're going to have to announce, yeah, I think basically the Thursday before the meeting, they're going to have to issue a public packet again, and, you know.
And that could be the next, does it have to be in the newspaper again because it's just changed?
Yeah.
If they're adding properties, their, their butter's list is going to change, their radius will change.
We're not, we're not done with neighbors and the butters.
No, no, I don't think so. But I think, like, what we're looking at here is, this, these are all reasonable concerns to be brought up, and, you know, this is all part of the process, so it's a healthy thing to do.